Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. This is our FY24 public budget hearing for Cootney County. It's August 30th, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. And in attendance are Commissioners Mattari Brooks and Duncan. And if you would please join me in a moment of silence. All right. Thank you. And Chief Keely, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Are there any changes to the agenda? All right. Hearing none. I will dispense with opening remarks for now and then reserve those for prior to public testimony if needed. Let's see. All right. Our FY24 budget hearing pursuant to Idaho Code 31-1605. And this is the discussion portion of our meeting. And we will start off with Aquifer Protection District. And our chair is Nisha Mayani.
All right. Thank you. So tonight, I'm going to take a few minutes to just briefly go over what the Aquifer Protection District is and what we do, why it's important, and then present the recommended 2024 budget. So the Aquifer Protection District was formed in 2007 by the Board of County Commissioners after voter approval. The purpose is to protect groundwater quality of the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer. The Advisory and Budget Committee is tasked with developing work program elements which will receive budget or receive funding, propose methods of cooperation among agencies, and to develop a budget recommendation for presentation to the commissioners for consideration with the annual budget. So before we get to that budget recommendation, we think it's important to highlight what the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer is and why it's so important to our community. The Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer was discovered in 1895. It stretches from Lake Ponderay south and west across the prairie, and it continues on into Spokane Valley. It was formed during Ice Age floods where large flood volumes and flow rates deposited large gravels, cobbles, and boulders. And because of that composition, it makes it very vulnerable to land, certain types of land use and contaminant releases. The aquifer across Cootney County and Spokane County serves water to more than 500,000 people. And there's more than 2,200 water wells in Cootney County. The Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer is recognized federally and by the state because of what it is. There's a federal sole source designation that was given to the aquifer in 1978. And that was given because this aquifer supplies water, more than 50% of the drinking water in this area. And there is no alternative source with the same quality or economy for this area. And that's really important. It is also the only aquifer in the state of Idaho that's designated as a sensitive resource aquifer. That designation was received in 1997. So with those two designations, what that means is no federal or state money can go into projects that may result in contamination to the aquifer. Locally, since the '70s, there was a set of rules that was administered by the Panhandle Health District, which most people know of, the five-acre rule. And then also that in 1993, a critical materials program. That rule set went away in, I believe, 2022. Panhandle Health District has been working very closely with Cootney County, and Cootney County has adopted the five-acre rule. And then Panhandle Health District is also working with municipalities on adoption of that critical materials program. So how does the Aquifer Protection District work? Parcel fee revenue is collected from parcels that are over the aquifer or over the watersheds that serve the aquifer. So this is just, this green area is a map that covers where the parcel fee revenue is collected. Aquifer Protection District also receives $100,000 per year from Burlington Northern. That's as a condition to their conditional use permit for their refueling depot that's west of Rathdrum. The Advisory Committee receives funding requests typically January through March of each year. And we consider funding requests for projects aimed at aquifer protection through either assistance to regulatory bodies, projects that implement educational programs or coordinate work of public agencies. Uh-oh. Okay. So two of the largest work program elements that we have are through the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality and then Panhandle Health District. So for the IDEQ, about 113,000 this fiscal year, proposed for this fiscal year. Most of that goes to monitoring of the refueling depot I talked about earlier. It is also used towards education and outreach and technical assistance support. On Panhandle Health District's side, there's about 389,000 that's dedicated towards their critical materials program. So they are doing facility, active facility inspections and enforcement, as well as sewer and stormwater management, and then water quality sampling. Some other requests that we received for this fiscal year 24, the Confluence Project. That is a project, it's an educational program that's focused on water resources. It's offered to 10th through 12th grades for several high schools that are over the aquifer. Spokane River Forum, H2O Breakfast, and also the Spokane River Forum Waste and Recycle Directory. Those are two programs that we funded for several years. Agromet Stations Annual Maintenance for four sites over the aquifer. Those stations are used by farmers and to best, most efficiently irrigate their crops. And then the City of Spirit Lake Mill Pond Dam Measuring Device. That's a project that will fit into an internal project that the Advisory Board is working on. We'll talk about later. And then Cootney Shoshone Soil and Water Conservation District has a no-till drill open space education program that they have proposed. So the Advisory Board, as I indicated, also does some, has some internal projects and expenses. One of the ones that has been somewhat of an ongoing project for the last several years is protection of sensitive aquifer recharge areas. Some examples of those aquifer recharge areas that the public may identify. Howser Creek, where it discharges out onto the prairie. Rathdrum Creek, Spirit Lake, and Hayden all have similar sumps or discharges. So in 2023, we've been working on a project to identify and prioritize areas. There's numerous other streams that are out on the aquifer that have, are similar in nature where there's wet areas that just kind of sink into the aquifer. And in 2024, our budget proposes an estimated $100,000 for LiDAR to better identify and map those areas and then work on delineation and a focused study of each one of those areas, which may be an ongoing task, depending on how many we identify. And then Task Four is potentially drafting in ordinance for protection of those areas. So in 2024, the budget for that would be $140,000. About $36,000 of the budget goes to Cootney County for staff and administrative support to the Aquifer Protection District. And then we have about $2,300 in miscellaneous supplies for education. So just to kind of wrap up the summary, there was eight external requests received in this year, 2023, totaling $600,752, where the Advisory Board is recommending seven of them, which totals $559,752, with an additional $142,380 of internal projects. So that puts our total budget expenditures at $702,132. That's up about 5% from the prior year. We are working on drawing down our fund balance, which the beginning of this year was about 930,000. So with these expenditures, this budget, we would be drawing about 201,000 from that balance. We anticipate over the next several years that we will be continuing to draw down that balance. But at some point, we will be limited on how many projects we can fund that are external beyond Panhandle Health District and DEQ as priorities without either increasing, well, without increasing the parcel fee. So at this time, we're recommending no increase to the parcel fee. And what I didn't state is the current parcel fee is $5.74 per parcel per year. And this is just final summary of the budget.
Do you have an estimate about how much, how many projects will roll over into fund balance?
From last year?
From 23, from FY23?
There's two or three that we're still waiting on for submitting their invoices from last year or from this last fiscal year. But that's not included within this.
Right. Right. Yeah, I just appreciate drawing down the fund balance. And I was just curious if there was going to be more added to it or if...
I think last year, we had projected using about 160,000 of the fund balance. So just kind of continuing that trend of about 150,000 to 200,000 per year, drawing, and drawing that down based on projects that we have anticipated for the next five years.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Bill, questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next presentation is Cootney County Emergency Medical Services System, or known as KCEMS, and our chief, Bill Keely.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come up.
Can you push the button? You don't need to, yep. Just turn it green. Thank you.
There we go. I don't know that my voice really needs amplification, but we'll give it a shot. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to come before you to present the budget this evening. Just a little recap of KCEMS. With our fire department partners, we operate nine ambulances 24/7 and 140-hour ambulances within Cootney County. We also cover a very small portion of Bonner County under contract. And Shoshone County EMS covers a very small portion of Cootney County on the east side of Fourth of July Pass under contract. Seven of the ambulances that we operate are at the paramedic level, and three are at the advanced DMT level. The three advanced DMT ambulances receive paramedic-level services from the seven core ambulances if they need that level of service. Our units responded to approximately 20,000 calls for service last year. Call volume continues to increase. EMS is a very cyclical process. We have our ups and downs. But for the last 10 years, we have been up except for one year in call volume. We provide a plethora of services out of EMS. We provide all of the 911 transports within Cootney County. We provide the interfacility transports. Interfacility transports are transports that go from one medical facility to another medical facility. We provide all of the critical care level. These are very, very sick patients who need an awful lot of interventions and require a provider who is trained above the paramedic level for all five northern counties. We also provide paramedic intercepts through contracts to the surrounding EMS systems. So if an ambulance is coming out of Benowa or an ambulance is coming out of Shoshone, when they hit the Cootney County line, if they're in need of a paramedic, we will supply that paramedic to them, and then they reimburse us for our cost of providing that level of service. I think this is very important. In the last three years, we have developed, as we've looked at our budget, what our focus needs to be for each year. Since this is some, yeah, that's why I wanted to say. Let's start that over again. KCEMS provides all of the equipment, the licensing, all of the medical direction, all of the ambulances, all of the supplies to the fire departments. We also pay the fire departments to hire the employees, and they're their employees. That way, you get double-banged for your buck. You're getting a paramedic. You're also getting a firefighter. They can do both jobs. And we reimburse the fire districts for staffing our ambulances. So when I say partner agencies, that's who I'm talking about. We also provide some financial support to the three fire departments that do not provide ambulance service in Cootney County. These are small volunteer agencies that provide first response in their area. There are a whole lot more fire trucks spread around than there are ambulances in the county. So we try to get a fire truck, which is usually closer there first, and then the ambulance very quickly behind them. So our focus this year was providing increases to our partner agencies. Two years ago, we developed a 10-year vehicle and equipment replacement plan that was approved by the Joint Powers Board, who I report to. Part of this budget is to support that plan so that we don't get in the situation of having vehicles that cannot perform what we expect them to perform, or we have vehicles that are not able to provide the level of care that we need to. This budget also supports KCMS staff. And part of this budget was set up to hire a new chief officer and so that they would have a stable budget when they come into their new position and can get acquainted with Cootney County and do all of those things that need to happen and not worry about where the budget lies. So the 2024 overview, prenuptial, yeah. Figuring out what ambulance revenue is going to be is a very difficult process. There's a lot of guessing here. We use data for the last 20 years, but it's still somewhat of a guess. So when we look at the budget, we're requesting new development, the allowed amount, the 3% levy increase, and we're estimating a 3% increase in patient revenue. So when you look at KCEMS's budget, you will see that about a third of it is tax-funded. Two-thirds of it is user fee or billing-funded. The tax portion allows us to provide the service. It basically, surprisingly, how this works out, provides everything that's needed to put an ambulance on the road and keep it operating. The two-thirds of it pay for the employees who provide the service. So it's a very nice mix there in the way that it breaks down. So our revenue, you obviously can read. I'm just going to hit some highlights of this. You will notice that there's a million-dollar difference, and that has to do with grant revenue we received last year. We don't know what our grant revenue will be this year. I do not believe it'll be anywhere close to that number next year. We receive, you see up there Washington GEMT revenue. We receive money from the state of Washington from their Medicare program. At the end of the year, based on what our cost is to provide the service is different from what they've paid us. Idaho is also implementing a program like this. This is all federal money that comes to Medicare. Also in that number is our impact fees, what we expect to collect in impact fees. I was in front of you not six months ago asking you to approve impact fees. We are, except for the city of Royly that we're still working with, collecting impact fees from every jurisdiction within Cootney County at this point. So our anticipated revenue is $10 million. And you see the 3.7% from taxes and 6.7% from user fees. There's the breakdown. Unlike most budgets, when you talk about a 3% tax increase, it's only on that tax portion of the budget, not the user fee. So it's only $98,000. Our new construction is $51,000. We have a URD closing for $40,000. And then when you register your car and pay sales tax, a very small amount of that goes to EMS agencies in the state of Idaho. So our total increase in taxes will be $222,000. That gives us an estimated levy rate of .000071809, or $36 a year on a half-million-dollar assessed value home. That puts us number three as the third lowest tax levy of ALS EMS systems in the state. We are also the third busiest system in the state, and only by a little bit. We should pass Canyon County this year if we have a really good year. Our expenses, we do not do our own billing. So you will see billing and collections in there. You see the service contracts, what's going out to our partner agencies. At 6.4 million, that's a $50,000 increase. We are actually collecting more money than we have in the past, where our bad debt and write-offs have gone down. And everything else on that list that you see, except for education and training, are things that are really out of our control. Medical supplies, personnel costs, vehicle maintenance, all of those things, as we all know, because we all drive, are going through the roof. And that's why you see the increases that you do in those areas. Also, obviously, we have an expense decrease because of not having the grant funding in there. Our capital expenses, that 10-year plan, next year, we will buy one new ambulance and remount an ambulance at $639,000. We also will buy two power-load systems and two gurneys. This is how you get a patient in and out of an ambulance. And one cardiac monitor, $173,000. And then we have two years left on a loan that replaced all of our radios through Motorola for $30,000. We're also putting $300,000 into capital reserves in order to meet next year's portion of the capital replacement plan. As you see, right now, we have 19 ambulances on the road. 15 of them are due for replacement in the next six years. At $600,000 for one and one remount, and a remount is taking the box and putting on a new chassis. It's a way of getting better use of our money, getting more life out of the ambulances that we're having. It's the chassis that really wear out. Though, we need that money to continue to increase because we can't afford to buy an ambulance on one increase in budget year. We have got to save and build those out as we go along. So total capital expenses will be $1.1 million next year in the proposed budget. With the budget that's been presented to you, we've increased our partner agencies. We've met that goal. We've supported the capital replacement plan by not only purchasing what we need to, but putting money away for what we need to in the future. There's an increase to my staff's pay to retain my staff. And probably the most important piece of this is this budget outlines the needs in the plan to address those needs as we transition to new leadership. I retire October 1st. This keeps KCEMS in a financial position that that is not the first thing on the mind of a new chief who comes in. They can actually, this is, we have a very complicated EMS system. It works wonderful, but it's very complicated. It went through a lot of processes to get where it is to this functioning system, this high-level functioning system we have today. It's going to take a new chief some time to understand that. This budget allows them not to worry about that financial piece and allows them to be the chief and function as the chief officer, learning what they need to do. And I will be happy to answer any questions for you.
Bill?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, hold on. Got to wait for me. My question is, what is the first thing you're going to do after you retire?
I am going to go spend six months with my brand-new granddaughter.
Oh, congratulations.
And I'm going to be grandpop for six months.
That is good. So I want to present you with a certificate of appreciation from Cootney County, thanking you for the 25 years of service and dedication in improving our community. And I'm on the board, and it is going to be a great loss. But we are very happy for your next chapter.
Thank you very much.
All right. I think right up here, right up front, we can, yep. Thank you. All right. Now, the elephant in the room, or the biggest budget, is our Cootney County budget. And our Clerk Locke is here, and our Finance Director, Brandy Falcon. So I will turn it over to Clerk Locke.
Thank you, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? This is the first year as clerk. Previously, I was chief deputy clerk for six years to present a balanced budget to the Board of County Commissioners. But before Brandy presents our fiscal year 24 balanced budget presentation, I'd like to thank this board, the elected officials, departments, and the county employees who helped prepare and have come to reach to this fiscal year 24 balanced budget. It truly has been a team effort. Since being at the county, I've watched the board alongside our auditor's team fine-tune the budget process that has led to a more efficient process each year. And I like to say, one of the best years this year. Before Brandy starts, I want to thank her. She is our Finance Director. I want to thank Arrow, our Budget Accountant. I want to thank Keith Taylor, our Deputy Finance Director. And I want to especially thanks Grace Longrim for being my chief deputy clerk and just walking us through this process. I think it's been a great year. So thank you, guys. And Brandy, take it away.
Thanks, Jennifer. Brandy Falcon, for the record, as well as Arrow Gidney. I'm going to do a brief overview of the proposed FY2024 budget. As Jennifer said, the budget is a culmination of all the requests from the departments under each of our elected officials. This is just a brief summary of all the departments that report to each of our elected officials. Our total county budget this year for FY24 comes in at $141,126,170. That's broken into two main pieces. It's broken up between general government and solid waste. So solid waste is a business-type activity. They operate on their own, and they're totally self-funded. So their budget is $31 million. The general government budget, which is everything else in the county, it's what people typically think of when they think of county services, is $110 million. This is a breakdown of the $141 million per elected official. I have also broken solid waste out on its own again. So on the right, you can see that the largest portion of the budget is the sheriff at 31%, followed by the VOCC at 26%, and then solid waste at 22%. All right. Some of the challenges and opportunities this budget cycle that we had to discuss and deal with. So right now, we have 96 open positions countywide. When I gave this presentation last year, we had 127. So we've made some progress in filling positions. These are our top four departments in terms of vacancies. Public defense has 18, jail has 24, 911 has 12, and patrol deputies have eight total vacancies. Deputies staff several different departments, so you have to look at multiple departments when considering the vacancies. So there's five patrol and three detective openings. When you look at open positions as a percentage of total positions available in a department, that will give you a vacancy rate. So when you look at it that way, our 911 department actually has the highest vacancy rate in the county at 35%. Next, House Bill 316 regarding the funding of Panhandle Health District. This went into effect mid-year FY22. So we've just continued to deal with it since that time. And just as a reminder, what that House bill did is, previously, a portion of Panhandle Health's budget was funded 50/50 between the state of Idaho and the five northern counties. Now, that portion of their budget is funded completely by the five northern counties. So we make up about 19% of their funding, and that 19% has to be funded 100% by the northern counties. So Cootney County's portion for FY24 So Cootney County's portion for F Y twenty-four comes in at one point seven million. That's an ongoing expense, so we do levy for that. House Bill two thirty-six was kind of a follow-up to the, a public defense bill from last year. It clarifies that public defense will transition to the state of Idaho in F Y twenty-five, which is going to be next October. So F Y twenty-four is going to be our last fiscal year with public defense under the county. We're not allowed to levy for them, so we have to fund them with sales tax from the state of Idaho, which they gave us for, are going to give us, four point one million dollars. And then that is slightly short of what the expenses actually are for our public defense, so we are using three hundred and fifty-nine thousand in fund balance to make up the difference. Originally, we were anticipating we wouldn't have to use fund balance because we were relying on the savings from cutting their open positions. When we went in and cut their open positions, almost all of them, about ten of them, are actually grant-funded. So that gives us savings for the grant, we'll spend less grant money, but it does not do anything to impact their sales tax portion of their budget. So we did have to end up using some fund balance there. Next, interest revenue for F Y twenty-four, we're budgeting about two and a half million dollars higher than we did last year. That is, we can't expect that kind of increase every single year. That's kind of an anomaly, just due to interest rates in the current market, and then we've been earning interest on our ARPA money that we haven't spent yet. So also, we have no insurance, no health insurance increase for F Y twenty-four, which is also a little unusual. That is definitely not going to be an every-year thing either. We have budgeted for state revenues flat with F Y twenty-three. They are slowing down. We rely on monthly reports put out by the State Tax Commission. They've only been updated through June right now, so we don't even have July's figures yet, but they have shown, some months have actually been less than the month the year prior. And if there has been an increase, it's been very small. So we have budgeted those state revenues flat, and we have also gone down in budgeted recording fees, because with the market slowing down, so has revenue in the recorder's office. Our budget is made up of three types of funds. We have property tax-supported, self-supported, special revenue, and then enterprise. So our property tax-supported funds, obviously, we have our general fund, which is twenty-two percent of the budget, and then our special levy funds. The justice fund is our largest special levy fund, so we break that out separately. It makes up the largest portion of our budget at forty-one percent. The other special levy funds, that by law, we are allowed to levy for these funds, would be liability insurance, airport, district court, et cetera. Self-supported special revenue funds are going to be vessel, enhanced nine-one-one, snowmobile, and aquifer protection. And I've already touched on solid waste, they are our enterprise fund. All right, personnel. So we had a couple of different changes budgeted to personnel for F Y twenty-four. So first and foremost, the board tentatively has approved a four and a half percent COLA for all employees. It's about one point nine million dollars. That will go into effect on September twenty-fourth, which is the first day of the pay period that rolls into F Y twenty-four. We're also fixing steps for a handful of employees, two hundred and eighty-eight employees, to be exact, and that costs two point two million dollars. And what we mean by fixing steps is, when the county first went on a grade and step pay matrix, we could not afford to put all of the employees on the right step based on how many years they had been with the county. So we split the difference and put them about halfway. Now that we can afford it, we've gone back. H R has provided a list of all of the employees who are at too low of a pay scale step based on how long they have been in their current position. And next, we have a request from the sheriff's office for a new five-year matrix for patrol and command staff. So we shortened the patrol matrix from about, I think, nine years down to five years, and increased the wages to be within three percent of quarter lane. Now, if we increase patrol deputies, we have to increase all the command staff above them. So we've increased appropriately the sergeants, lieutenants, and captains to keep them all a certain percentage above the people below them. So on average, all of those employees affected by that new matrix, it's going to be about a fifteen percent increase. And the new matrix does include longevity pay for patrol and command staff at fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five years of service with the sheriff's office specifically. Next, we are budgeting to increase our elected officials' wages to ninety-seven percent of Canyon County's F Y twenty-three wages. That costs a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Canyon County has tentatively said that they're going to do a three percent increase in F Y twenty-four, so that would mean that our elected officials would then be six percent less than Canyon County going into the new fiscal year. We're also funding step progressions for a little over eight hundred thousand dollars. This means that employees on their pay matrix step would go to the next step on their anniversary date with the county. So total wage increases come to about six and a half million dollars. We do incur some savings from cutting our funding on our open positions. So any open position that has been open longer than a hundred days, we cut in half to fifty percent. That was about fifty-seven positions. So we do consider the positions that we cut as kind of an ongoing liability. You know, if we fill one of those open positions, we have to pay for it, and it wasn't, and we didn't fund it. So that liability of two point six million, we could really reduce that down to about one point eight, because of that two point six million, eight hundred thousand is from cutting positions in the public defenders office. And they are going away, so we do not consider those open positions a long-term liability for us. All right. And then, these are personnel requests additionally that came from departments. So the board approved tentatively ten new full-time employee positions for a total loaded cost of six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And then tentatively approved fifty-two changes to existing positions, total loaded cost of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So the eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, most of that comes from three specific requests from the sheriff's office. That would be to increase overtime for nine-one-one and the jail, and then to increase the temporary and seasonal employee budget for the jail. Then we're also budgeting a mid-year wage changes pool of four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. What that means is there is a, a pool of money sitting in the general fund, and if the board approves changes to personnel throughout F Y twenty-four that has a long-term budget impact, we would fund it from this pool of money in the general fund.
Brandy?
Yes.
I know, but I think a lot of people that are watching, what does loaded mean versus...
Yes, thank you. Loaded means that we're considering the wage being paid to an employee, plus all of the taxes that Cootney County has to pay, the Percy contributions we have to pay, and the medical costs and workers' comp that we have to pay. So it's all the employer costs in addition to the salary.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, operating and capital expenditures. Operating expense total for the county only increased by thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is point one six percent. I think that's pretty excellent. The departments did a really good job keeping their budgets fairly flat. And then solid waste, on their own, was a one and a half million dollar increase, I believe primarily due to their hauling contracts going up. And then, as far as capital purchases go, approved in the budget so far, two point three million for capital purchases in general government, fourteen point four million in solid waste. All right, this is how we calculate our property tax. So we start with our base. We add on the three percent increase. We add on ninety percent of new growth, eighty percent of our U R D return. We take out the F Y twenty-four replacement dollars the state is going to give us, and that gives us the maximum tax dollars available for the county. Our actual levy amount right now for, for F Y twenty-four is fifty-two dollars less than total amount available. I don't, I'm not worried about fifty-two dollars breaking the bank, but it is important to understand there is a tiny difference there, because the property rule abstract was changed a little bit after the statutory deadline. By the time we got it, we had already published our budget, and it cost over five hundred dollars to publish the budget, so it just didn't make sense to republish to capture that fifty-two dollars. But if you want to reserve it to foregone, you can do so. On the right, you can see property tax burden per fund. So again, the justice fund is the largest property tax burden at sixty-one percent, followed by general fund at fourteen percent, and then district court at thirteen percent. This is a snapshot of our enterprise fund. Again, self-funded through their fees and fund balance usage. On the right is the year-over-year change in their expenses and revenues. Down at the bottom, you can see that large negative number, it's almost a million dollars internal payments, so that's basically a negative revenue. Solid waste actually pays money to our other county departments for services that we provide them, and that almost million dollars is a direct offset to our property tax in our regular county budget. Okay, so obviously, our budget is balanced, which means revenues equal expenses. So one hundred and forty-one million in revenues, fifty-nine million of that is property tax, also called the levy amount. Sixty-one point three million of that is state funds and other fees, and then eighteen point three million of fund balance usage, and we have a small number of grant-funded personnel at two million dollars. This is a year-over-year snapshot of property tax versus non-property tax revenues. When I talk about non-property tax revenues, I'm referring to any revenue that is not property tax. So that would be sales tax from the state, revenue sharing from the state, liquor apportionment from the liquor board, fees that we charge for services we provide, and then interest we earn on our bank accounts. So our levy amount is increasing three point two million dollars from F Y twenty-three, and then non-property tax revenues are increasing seventeen point four million dollars. Starting on the left of this graph in F Y twenty-one, you can see in the dark green, that's our property tax figure, it does grow slightly every single year. In the gray, that's our non-property tax revenue. That also grows every year, but at a, at a much higher pace. So going to F Y twenty-four will be the third year in a row that our non-property tax revenues are higher than our property tax revenues. That's just reflective of us constantly analyzing and trying to shift burden onto users instead of tax. This is a year-over-year comparison of our expenditure categories. You can see personnel, operating, and capital, and the increases of the last three years. All right, looking forward to F Y twenty-four. So after all of the proposed increases, our ongoing personnel costs, our annual loaded salary cost is eighty-seven point five million dollars. The liability of the open positions we cut funding on is two point six million. You can bring that down to about one point eight if you don't include the public defense positions. And again, going back to public defense, the transition to the state is going to be something we will have to work through in F Y twenty-four. The state has not been clear at all on some key things, such as, you know, employee payouts, the liabilities that we have, because they're currently our employees, and they have, you know, leave and sick leave and vacation on the books. We don't really know yet how that's going to work, transitioning them to the state. We also have heard rumors that the state may require us to continue paying some of their expenses, and they'll reimburse us. So we're still waiting on clarity regarding that. We have a couple capital projects over the next three years. Obviously, our justice building expansion, I believe we break ground in a couple of weeks, actually, primarily funded with ARPA dollars, and then there will be a portion funded out of our fund balance. I do want to be really clear, all of our grant revenues and expenditures, including ARPA, including the stuff for the building, are not part of our adopted budget. We treat grant revenues and expenditures as budget amendments throughout the year. So the board votes on those individually at business meetings throughout the fiscal year. And then the next project would be the jail pods. I believe the board just published an R F Q in the last couple of weeks. So that's coming on the scene, that'll be a new project over the coming years, probably funded with fund balance. In conclusion, once again, our property tax amount is fifty-nine point four million dollars, which is forty-two percent of our anticipated revenues. And we're continuing to focus on filling open positions, so focusing on keeping our pay matrix up to date and competitive with the market, with other employers and agencies in our area, to try and fill our vacancies with high-caliber employees. Legislative changes, as always, affect our day-to-day operations. Our elected officials work to keep in contact with people in Boise as much as they can to try and ensure that things coming down the road hopefully do more to give us local control instead of taking it away. And then obviously, the change of the preliminary levy rate over the last couple of years continues to result in losses of revenue for us, and also causes a lot more time delays for us and for our taxing districts. We continue to have healthy fund balance reserves. We maintain two and a half months in emergency reserves right now. All of our other fund balance is assigned for capital projects. We still continue to be debt-free, and since two thousand and twelve, we've been awarded for outstanding financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, both on our annual comprehensive financial report and our budget book. And then lastly, this presentation and all of our financial reporting is always available on our website at the following link. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, questions?
Again, it's, it's one of those things, I know what it is, but somebody watching may not. What are jail pods?
Actually, I would ask the sheriff to answer that, because I don't fully know.
I can take a stab at it. We, not we, this board, but in two thousand and eighteen, the jail was expanded, but it was shelled in portion of it. So those two portions that were shelled in will now be built out, so we can house inmates in a better situation rather than the overcrowding that's happening right now. So.
There you go.
All right, Bill. I mean, sorry, Bruce, questions?
No, thank you. Excellent job.
Good job.
I have a couple.
Okay.
Just a clarification. When we talked about our COLA increase, our cost-of-living increase, the C P I came in much higher. Do you remember what the C P I was?
That would be a Sylvia question. I remember the range that she presented, I think was anywhere from three to six percent. I don't remember what she said the C P I came in at.
Okay, well, I, our four percent, I just want to point out that our four percent, four and a half percent COLA is a lot less than the C P I was. So that's what I wanted to, to point out. And then also, when we're talking about the public defenders, the Public Defense Commission grants, are they in the sales tax portion, or we just didn't address it?
The sales tax is, they have three budgets. They have a sales tax-supported budget and then two grant budgets. For the adopted budget, we just take all the personnel costs in those grant-funded positions, and we budget the exact same dollar amount in grant revenue, so that it's a net-zero effect on the adopted budget. Then when we get the actual grant award, again, go back and make a budget amendment to book what we actually received and the money that we're rolling over from last year that we didn't use. So in, in terms of the adopted budget, it's a net zero.
Perfect. All right. Now, what I will do is open it up for public testimony. So I think we have a couple people here who've signed up. And does somebody have the sheets?
Please.
Oh, thank you, team. Okay.
And since there are only two, do we need to do the timer?
Yeah, I think we're still going to do the timer. So, yep.
Just to be fair.
All right. We have Charity Joy wishes to speak.
Great for the guest here, Captain Loach. This is still on? Yes. Okay, I apologize, I have like something in my throat. Okay, good evening. I'm Charity Joy, and I'm here as a private citizen, a resident and property owner here in Cootney. I want to express my appreciation to all commissioners for your attentiveness and responsiveness to public input during this lengthy budget process. There's been quite a few meetings. I personally addressed three budget items over three separate meetings, and I was specifically addressing the compelling of taxes from property owners, and those three specific items had to do with entities that aren't county offices, so they were more discretionary funds. And so I do appreciate you guys listening and taking in all that information, and I believe two of the three things I addressed were eliminated for the budget, so I think that's a win for taxpayers. Additionally, I'd like to commend the county's chief financial officer for her professionalism throughout this budget process. I have sat through opt-in budget meetings through lots of different taxing entities in the county. Some of them are very chaotic and very difficult to follow for the public, so her work and that of her office is a credit to the county, and I want to thank you for that. Finally, while being a fiscal conservative, I cannot support the levy three percent increase, but you do understand the complexities that go into that decision-making process, especially in regards to raising staff salaries. In this new era of post-COVID restructuring employment, it's a struggle across all departments to retain people that are willing to come work in person, which a majority of county services have to be done in person. So I can appreciate that. I still don't like the levy increase, though. So again, thank you for your diligence and comprehensive review, for listening and being responsive to public input, and for working with the other electeds during this process. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, William Lee?
Hi, my name is William Lee. So I'm not super knowledgeable about all the technicalities that go into creating a budget in government, but I was just looking at the, the bigger, more denser table of data here, and there was something that seemed unusual to me is, so if you look at twenty twenty-one, that financial year, compared to the upcoming, the, the Board of County Commissioners' personnel expenses have almost doubled from nine point one million to sixteen point eight million. So I was just, I was wondering, is that weird? Am I, am I missing something? But, because it shouldn't, it shouldn't be increasing exponentially like that. I was wondering if you guys had an explanation for that.
Is this the published budget we're talking about?
Is that, is that the sheet you're talking about? Yeah, I don't actually have that up here.
I don't see the nine point one, but the reason the F Y twenty-four published personnel expense for the B O C C is high is because when we publish the budget, all of the proposed increases, like the new sworn matrix and the COLA and the fixing the employee steps, all of that sits in one account, in the general fund. in one account in the general fund, which is under the BOCC. And then after the budget is published, we go back through and we actually, in our accounting system, load those costs into each employee record, and after that, the money is dispersed amongst all elected officials. So the actual adopted budget for the BOCC is not going to be that high. It was allocated amongst other electeds.
Does that answer your question?
So these are, these numbers are tentative, but isn't this the final budget?
Okay, so, Will, let me try to explain it. So when we go to give raises over the six elected officials in the BOCC, all those raised monies are within the BOCC. So once the budget's adopted and then people are going to be paid, then it goes to those individual elected officials and their employees.
Okay.
Yeah, so their budgets will actually get a little bit bigger, and the BOCCs will get a little bit smaller, because that amount of money that was published under the BOCC is going to go out to the elected.
Contains the raises and the inflationary adjustments.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you know what, so currently it's $16.8 million. Is it going to fall down significantly, or do you know how much it will fall down?
Well, under the BOCC, it will fall.
Okay. Okay, well, yeah, I just wanted to bring this up. I appreciate everything you guys do. I love living in Cootenee County. I think it's the best county in Idaho, maybe America. Thanks.
And I agree. Thank you, Will. All right, is there anyone on the phone who would like to make public comment on any of the three budgets presented tonight? Okay. Anybody else in the audience, public comment? All right. I would take a motion to move into deliberations.
I move that we enter into deliberations.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, just for the public's information, that this is now a discussion amongst the three commissioners on the proposed budget, and we, thank you, Keith. And we'll go ahead and start. Bruce, are you?
Well, did you want to run through the Aquifer Protection District first and the emergency medical services, or do you want to just do the whole thing? And then we can make our statements and?
Yep, that is totally fine. We can start with APD.
Yeah, I mean, it seems pretty reasonable. They do a lot. And obviously, the Aquifer is pretty important, so.
Yep.
I think their requests are very reasonable.
Okay. Bill, any comments on the APD budget?
What, the what?
On the Aquifer budget, any comments?
Aquifer budget, no comment. I think you guys have done a great job.
I'm like you. Thank you.
All right, and EMS?
I have no comments with that. I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
No comment's a good thing.
All right, and now the county.
Well, would you like me to start?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, today, I think, is a great day for the citizens of Cootenee County. My fellow board members and I are finalizing the fiscal year 2024 budget and have corrected several wrongs that I believe have occurred in past years. And before I address some of these issues, I'd first like to give a big thanks to our clerk, Jennifer Lockner, team. They spend a lot of time helping me better understand our county finances and how they work. Thank you. I'd also like to just give a big thanks to our finance director, Brandy Falcon, and our budget accountant, Arrogidney, who did an incredible job compiling and running numbers for various scenarios. Their diligence and attention to detail was outstanding. Thank you. I'd also like to thank the other elected officials and their staff who put in significant time to get the information I needed to perform the fiscal analysis of many of our operational challenges. And finally, I would like to thank both commissioners Duncan and Brooks for their patience and willingness to entertain my ideas so we could produce this budget. Thank you.
That took a lot.
Commissioners are tasked with creating a financial vision for the county, which is manifested in the annual budget. Thereafter, it is our job as commissioners to ensure that that vision becomes reality. The way we do that is through good budgetary policy. The first place we did that was to reevaluate our fees and increase them to reflect the actual cost of the service. I do not believe that property owners should subsidize fee-based county services that others use. So increasing the fee was the first order of priority. The next was with our operating budget. Our operating expenses, excluding solid waste, increased only $38,000. That's a mere 0.16% increase over last year. In an inflation era of 5% or more, that is exceptional, in my opinion. And the people who put a sharp pencil to that part of their budget, I say thank you personally and on behalf of taxpayers. So what is the focus of this year's budget? It's personnel. As good stewards of the county budget, we must differentiate between frivolous use of tax dollars and being cheap. As many people know, being cheap often costs you a lot more in the long run. A good example of this was with our sheriff's office, which accounts for about a third of our entire $141 million budget. I asked the sheriff's office to provide me with all of the expenses for training and recruiting a single patrol deputy, to the point where he or she is signed off by their field training officer. For every person that didn't make the cut, I loaded those expenses onto the ones that did. The loaded cost for one of these trainees was $105,962. Next, I asked how many deputies lasted five years with the county going back 10 to 12 years. I was astonished that we lost 33 deputies, over half out of 62 hires. The recruiting and training to county taxpayers for those 33 deputies was $3.5 million. $3.5 million, gone. To understand why we're losing so many deputies, a Coeur d'Alene police officer would start making about $11,000 more per year than a Cootenee County sheriff's deputy on day one. Fast forward to the end of five years, and that same police officer would be making over $20,000 more than one of our deputies. That $20,000 pay differential equates to about $100,000 larger mortgage one can afford. Is it any wonder so many of our deputies, the ones that county taxpayers paid over $105,000 each to recruit and train, are now police officers at Coeur d'Alene and other agencies? It takes about five years for a deputy to be fully trained and operating at a level that optimally reduces taxpayer liability. You don't get many five-year deputies when other agencies are paying significantly more than ours. The technical term for this kind of fiscal management is called penny wise and pound foolish. This budget fixes this by aligning patrol deputies' pay to within 3% of Coeur d'Alene's pay, and the pay matrix is compressed from nine years to five. Why? For two reasons. The first is because this change in pay has resolved vacancy issues in other departments, including Ada County, Canyon County, and even here locally in Coeur d'Alene, where they are fully staffed. I believe that it is foolish to ignore what other agencies are doing successfully. And the second reason is because if you can get a deputy to stick around for five years, he or she will likely stay for the balance of their careers. Also, an experienced deputy is more efficient and reduces taxpayer liability. This is evident in how poor-performing law enforcement officers in other communities have cost their taxpayers millions in settlements from unfortunate incidents. This is cheap insurance, in my opinion, for our taxpayers. With this major change, I expect to see significant improvement in patrol productivity and significant savings in recruiting and training. Why do we need an increase in productivity? Because this community has been discovered by the good people and the bad. The recent growth has attracted the criminal element from outside this area, and we have to decide whether we will have a reactive law enforcement agency where we send deputies to take crime reports after the fact, or a proactive law enforcement agency that focuses on crime reduction. I would argue that our quality of life will remain much higher with a proactive approach. There were a few other personnel expenses included in the budget, which I didn't object to, because we were talking thousands, not hundreds of thousands. And if there's one thing I've learned over my years as an employer, it's that when you squabble over nickels with employees, like in the case of on-call pay for deputies, it often costs you several times more in lower performance and productivity. Again, penny wise and pound foolish. And this is my personal experience, having hired and had the good fortune of working with a lot of good people. Further, we updated the pay matrix for county staff that puts people's pay in line with their responsibilities and ensures annual steps for those high-performing employees. This is one of the most important changes we made throughout the county government. When you don't have people wanting to fill vacant positions, managers become beholden to their employees, which often creates an environment that ends up driving away the better performers. Seasoned managers know that when you pay people correctly, you can demand more from them, a lot more. And I want to be clear that I will be demanding a lot more from you, the employees. And this includes the elected officials, too. As a member of a body whose job it is to set policy throughout county government, there was no formal policy for determining elected official pay. The elected official pay policy up to this point has been driven by executive fiat. I believe that executive fiat is the last thing Cootenee County citizens want from their elected officials. I would propose that we develop a good policy that includes a trigger for when we need to look at the policy, a methodology for determining how pay is to be calculated, and a set of criteria that must be met to establish whether the elected officials will get a pay adjustment. We will continue, I hope, in the coming year to refine this policy and others. To recap, we significantly increased user fees so that property owners would not bear the burden of subsidizing county services that are typically paid for by the users. This process will continue regularly into the future to ensure property owners are not subsidizing what users should be paying. Second, we focused on making sure we are properly paying county employees for the jobs they are doing, and that are required by state law. We have a duty to ensure that there are qualified people ready, willing, and able to perform the services that taxpayers are due. And third, in order to meet these statutory service-level requirements and maintain a small, a small buffer to cover mid-year changes, we are asking in this budget for the allowable tax increase from property owners. This allows the county to maintain a small pool of $445,000 out of $141 million budget minus solid waste for mid-year changes. Last year, we made over $750,000 in mid-year changes, so this board, and especially myself, is sensitive to the need to actively manage expenses and stay within our budget. So let this year be the year of addressing personnel, and next year, I encourage my fellow commissioners to make it the year of technology, that we attempt to find ways to do more with the same or fewer people. We know that it's difficult to hire good people. By making sure we have qualified people performing the service that the state requires us to perform, coupled with the use of the latest technology to do more with fewer people, we are upholding our promise to keep the bureaucracy from growing and government small. So I encourage my fellow commissioners to join me in supporting this budget and make it the year of addressing personnel. I ask that you vote yes to help turn our county law enforcement department into a proactive and not reactive agency, and save taxpayers possibly millions in liability and recruiting and training that other agencies reap the benefits of. I ask that you vote yes to ensure that we are properly paying our personnel to perform the services that are state-mandated, and that we have higher-producing personnel so we can keep the bureaucracy in check. And I ask that you vote yes on a pay policy for elected officials that reflects the responsibilities of the job and removes pay decisions from those individuals who wish to maintain executive fiat. And I hope that if any of my contemporaries should decide, maybe, to make this budget political and vote against it, then I respectfully ask that they do what business people do, which is put their money where their mouth is. And I challenge my colleagues, if you vote against this budget, to not accept the pay raise, and I will join you. It is only fair that if one is to stand on principle and protest publicly against this budget, then that person should live by that principle. And so I say, let's put our money where our mouths are, and let's not accept the raise together. The public should see it, the public should hear it, and I will be right there to not accept the raise with that commissioner who votes against this budget. And those are my statements, and thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
I don't have a prepared statement. I am happy to have our law enforcement function that we do, and I believe in paying at the top of the scale. Sheriff Bob often says, well, I don't want to be at the top of the scale, and I think that's more politically. I want to be at the top of the scale so other people who are looking for work want to come here. And when they come here, so we can, and I know we do, demand performance of those people. Those are good things. Those are good things. Law enforcement is an essential, not important, an essential part of this community. And I'll name another one that hasn't come up much tonight, the dump. And they like to be called solid waste. But we have one of the best dumps out there. We really do. If you have people visiting Cootenee County, have them go to the dump and drive them through there. It doesn't stink, there's no papers flying around, and last year, I think, our cost went down a little bit. Now, I don't know about next year, but it's okay. We're doing well, and we have good people in the county. We have great people in the county, and that's what providing government is all about. Moreover, people say, put your money where your mouth is. Well, no, we're putting your money where we hope you want it to be. We're trying to discern where you want it to be. And we think if we take care of law enforcement, and we take care of the dump, I think we've got a lot of it covered, plus normal efficiencies with the people, the wonderful people that work for Cootenee County. So, thanks, Brandy.
Okay. All right. Well done, well played, so, thank you.
Thank you.
A couple things along the budget process that I have had angst with, that Commissioner Matarri has brought up. I do like policies, and I like policies that cover when we are looking at paying people. Let me start over, I'll address that in just a second. Ever since I've started here, I've put employees first. I have voted for pay raises every single year for employees, except for one year. It doesn't mean I've voted for the budget, but I've supported employee pay raises, because we're a service industry, and I think it's very, very important that we pay our employees well, so there isn't a lot of turnover, and we can produce the best service possible when that happens. So when we look at paying employees differently across different elected officials, I like to have a solid policy as to why that's happening. So for on-call pay, we don't have that policy regarding, you know, why would we pay this department on-call pay but not this department when they're all on-call, when they all have job descriptions that say they're on-call? So that's why I voted no in that particular instance. The elected officials, lack of pay policy. I'm very looking forward to Commissioner Matarri's proposed policy. So that will be very good to get something there, so it doesn't seem arbitrary like he referred to. So my challenge that I heard on that would be, I would challenge every elected official here to turn down the raise, and I would do the same. So I believe that people run for- run for office, and there's a certain amount attached to it, and you know what you're getting into. So, nobody came here to get rich, and without that lack of policy, I'd be comfortable, you know, giving elected officials a cost-of-living raise, because nobody should be going backwards when they intended to run for public service. So, that is what I'd say about that. I actually support the new sheriff's matrix, except there isn't any metrics to support it yet. We are still fleshing that out. So, it's difficult for me to approve something that has no steps to what, what is allowing this officer to progress through the five-year pay metrics. So, that is a very big concern. Ada County was brought up. Well, Cootenee County actually pays higher starting wage than Ada County does. So, that is one thing. The other thing is, Cootenee County had a five-year matrix at one point, and we had to go to a nine-year matrix, because we were losing people at that five-year mark. So, I'll be interesting to, I'll be interested to see, you know, how that plays out with us. So, I think that's kind of about it. I was very happy with the whole process this year. It was great to have Commissioner Matarri on board and make some changes that I had wanted to see for the last four years. So, I am looking forward to continuing on and, and working towards putting the best product possible out, and that is our, our people. So, with that, is there any other statements, or would you like to make a motion?
Well, I would just like to follow up with what you said about the pay matrix and the annual requirements. I think that I agree with you. There is no, you never can tell the future. There's no crystal ball to tell you, but there are at least other agencies that you can at least try to emulate to achieve success. I also agree that we should have those criteria defined and kind of formalized before the beginning of the next fiscal year. So, we have a little bit of work cut out for us, but we're just constrained by statute right now when it comes to the budget. But I agree with you on that. So.
All right.
That's it for me.
Okay. Fantastic.
So, how do we do this? Just a motion for each one?
Yeah. Did you, do you have a?
I believe it's to fix and determine, right?
Yeah. And I think she said it. So, it's a two-step process, so I just want to let people know. So, today, we are approving but not adopting until Friday, if that makes sense. So.
So, I'll take a stab at this.
Okay.
I move that we approve the Aquifer Protection District FY, I move that we shall fix and determine the Aquifer Protection District FY24 budget.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. Thank you. All right.
Next up, I move that we shall fix and determine the Cootenee County Emergency Medical Services System FY24 budget.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
And the third one is, I move that we fix and determine the Cootenee County FY24 budget.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
I haven't decided yet. I'm contemplating. I will vote no based on some of the issues that I have presented throughout the budget system, understanding that I absolutely believe in our employees and especially our law enforcement system. But there's just some things I think that I would feel more comfortable worked out if they were worked out before this budget and not, not right now at approval. So, thank you.
All right. With that, that includes the FY24 budget process to this point, and join us 10 o'clock on Friday for adoption. Thank you all.
Thank you.